Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardner's zoning board of appeals, April 19, 2022, at 6:31 PM. Okay, I've got to go over several of the ground rules by which this board operates under in Gardner. Well, first, I'm going to go back and saying this meeting is being heard via Zoom. All mics will be muted until entry to the meeting. We will periodically unmute the mics for questions. Should you have a question or need to be heard, please raise your hand to the camera. Please state your name and address before questions, and we ask for your patience with this meeting forum. Okay, in Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appeared in the public notice. The board is under no obligation to adhere to this sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by an agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. Any other interested parties present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. Members of the board hearing may direct appropriate questions anytime during the hearing. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision with 90 days after the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor for the variance or special permit for it to be approved and granted. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office, and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The burden for supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or the representative of the applicant. At this meeting, as this meeting is being held via Zoom, the board requests that each person identify himself or herself as the name and address for addressing the board. Should you have a question, again, please raise your hand and you will be heard. Sitting on tonight's hearing is Mr. Michael Gary, zoning clerk, Mr. Randall Heglin, third member, and myself, Raymond LaFon, as chair. Excuse me. This meeting will be taped. Does anyone object to the taping of this hearing? If you do, please raise your hand. Okay, there are no objections, so the meeting is open. We'll proceed. I'm going to read the agenda. It's the date April 19, 2022, time 6:35, location is going to be via Zoom. And any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to the reasonable requirements of the chair. As to the number, placement, and operational equipment, we will not be placing any equipment here unless you put it in your office, and I'd like to see it if you do that. As to not interfere with the conduct of the meeting, any person attending to make such recordings shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the clerk. All documents shall become part of the official record of the meeting. The agenda for this evening is case number 2022-04-01 for Alan Belanger, Blake Street slash 161 Chelsea Street, variance amended amendment. Case 2022-04-02, special permit, Tony Molina, 376 Chestnut Street, multifamily dwelling. So, and then there will be announcements and correspondence after the cases are heard. There'll be an acceptance of or correction of minutes for previous meetings. Julian, January 18th, January 31st, February 2nd, and February 15th. Okay, we're going to begin with the first case this evening. It's case 2022-04-01, Alan Belanger, use variance. Application to amend the use variance case 2021-04-01 for warehouse, storage, and professional office at 161 Chelsea Street, Gardner Mass, parcel ID R17-20-16, located in the single-family one zoning district SFR1, is denied as it does not comply with the granted use variance case 2021-04-01 dated 6/2/2021. This request requires zoning relief from the zoning board of appeals. Agent or attorney for Mr. Belanger.
Brian Marchetti here from McCarty Engineering.
Good evening, Mr. Marchetti.
How are you?
Great, so let's go.
All right, let's go. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Westman Storage, Alan Belanger's manager, to request an amendment to the existing use variance we received last June. So if you recall, Mr. Belanger acquired the parcel. He'd like to operate an office and storage facility out of the building. As part of the investigation process, we hired an architect. They came and assessed the building, and he tried to figure out the best way to install these garage doors and access doorways to the building in order to build out the storage units. And as well as we had a surveyor come to the property to stake up the lot lines. The end result of that was the reduction of about eight storage bays. He wasn't allowed to, because of structural concerns in the building, he wasn't able to locate several of the bays on the north side of the building. And then on the south side of the building, the proximity of the building from the lot line, it was just too narrow to get any access to it. So he lost four-story bays in the south side of the building as well. In the meantime, Mr. Belanger was able to acquire the parcel off of Blake Street, which is immediately behind the building. And due to the topography and grades and the foundation elevations, he found out he was able to, he would be able to add three bays in the basement elevation of the building on the backside. So we'd be able to add doorways. However, to access those doors, we'd have to create a driveway on the Blake Street parcel to access the building.
Mr. Marchetti, can I ask a question right now?
Yes.
Mike had referenced you said to add three bays.
Yes.
And I'm looking at the plan. This drawing right here. If you can see that.
Yep.
And I see a 10-door, 10-foot door bay, a nine-foot door bay, and a four-foot door bay. Are those the three you're referencing?
No, no, those bays are up on the top elevation of the building that are accessed from Chelsea Street. So it's wide enough. This plan is an elevation plan showing the east side of the building. It's wide enough to facilitate three garage doors on the back of the building.
Okay.
Yeah, because of the basement elevation. So the bays that you see on the site plan are, everything that you see is access from Chelsea Street. That driveway would facilitate access to three more doors he'd be able to cut into the foundation on the backside of the building.
Okay, so this drawing does not show the three bays that you're speaking of?
No, I just, I just noted. I have a note on the bar on the right side of the building that says three garage bays access through Blake Street parcel.
Okay, I just noticed that. Okay, and that's in the area of, well, the arrowhead is at the nine-foot door bay on my plan.
Yeah, on the backside, but within that 40-foot plus or minus, looks like a riprap stone driveway area in the back. Alan's able to facilitate three garage doorways on the backside of the building.
Okay, thank you.
So we're losing about eight bays in total because of the architecture and access, and he'd be able to gain about three back on the lower side of the building. So.
Okay, you may continue.
So we filed for a zoning determination. We're not, it doesn't change the use that we got the variance for last June. It's the same use. It's less bays than we had proposed previously. We just need to access it now through the parcel off of Blake Street that the applicant now owns as well. It's an undeveloped parcel. It's all, looks like there were some driveways and stuff on in the past, but it's basically overgrown and some vegetation out there now. So in order to do this, we just have to do some tree clearing and grading to facilitate that driveway. So when it comes to answering the three questions about the criteria for zoning relief or zoning variance, as I said, it's the exact same use that was proposed previously when we got the use variance. So I provided the same three answers and responses to the zoning questions. You know, whether it would provide substantial hardship, there's no detriment, detriment, non-detrimental public good. These were approved before, and grants will not nullify or derogate from the intent of the bylaw. So if there's any more detailed questions you'd like to go through or discuss, I'd be happy to try to answer them. And we did, I guess, I guess if I can just interject for a second, we did get some correspondence back from Rob Oliver, the city engineer. So we know there are some modifications we'll have to make to the driveway and parking areas. We're still intending on putting stormwater into some sort of underground infiltration, drywells, things like that. There's no public drainage infrastructure on Chelsea Street or Blake Street. Right now, the water runs off down the roadway, over the shoulders of the road, and you know, eventually goes where it goes. There are adjacent wetland systems or drainage ways off property. You know, so we'll do whatever we can to add some sort of infiltration and stormwater on-site. But the same drainage is going to be maintained. One of the questions that, I guess there were five total comments that Rob made. One, Blake Street and Tar Street. Tar is the access to Blake Street. They're both unaccepted private ways. It's, you know, they're unaccepted private ways over the several houses and structures that are accessed by them, and we're proposing to do the same thing here. Proposed parking spaces in driveways are required to be paved and provided with adequate drainage. As I said, we are proposing to pave the aprons. The remainder of the driveway, we were going to use a gravel or regrinds, which would be compacted. We'd add, on the Blake Street parcel, there's adequate room to add some sort of detention on the shoulders of the driveway. So we can certainly provide stormwater controls there. And then up in the, on the Chelsea Street side, we're going to do the same thing, provide some sort of drywell system underneath the pavement. And again, there's no stormwater infrastructure to connect to within Blake Street or Chelsea Street. So anything that does overflow will do what it does today and continue to sheet flow down Chelsea Street and Blake. Parking spaces shall be located at least 10 feet from property lines. That's something that we're certainly going to have to look at again. We had proposed parking spaces on this plan last year that was approved. Was within the 10-foot setback to the property line on the northern side. We're going to provide screening and fencing, landscaping. We've discussed it with the D. Butter. They were on board. We were proposing. You know, we will certainly have that discussion with Rob Oliver when we come back. Plan submitted does not indicate adequate snow storage area. We didn't designate a snow storage location on the plan, but we can certainly show that. I mean, we have plenty of space on the Blake Street side. And then up on the Chelsea Street side, you know, we can, we can show areas for it. If snow can't be stored there, that will have to be hauled offsite. And then number five is last comment says, "Any activity that disturbs 10,000 square feet or more of land area requires a stormwater mandatory permit." So with both parcels, it's about 12,000 square feet. So we know the total area of disturbance as a result of this is over that 10,000 square feet. So we will file with Rob for that stormwater permit.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Marchetti. It sounds like there's going to be some modifications to the plan that we have here in terms of, there's a lot of, no dimensions on a lot, except for the size of the door bay. And I'm looking, I'm going to go back to question, oh, number three of from Mr. Oliver. And that's the one about the 10-feet park property lines. And you mentioned the parking spots on the north side.
Yes.
And you've got your retaining wall and approximately, how, what's the distance from the retaining wall to that parking space?
So the retaining wall to the parking space, in total, right there, you see about, I think it's seven feet from the property line to the parking space.
Our wall to the property line is going to be three.
Yeah, so the walls of the property lines, three, the top of the wall is about another foot. There's a couple of feet behind the wall. So you're at, you know, the seven feet, and then we, you know, in a case like this, we likely have a parking bumper or something like that, like wheel stops, which would get us to 10 feet. If we had to shift these around, we certainly could. We can, we can move them another couple of feet away to get that.
Okay. Other than that, I don't really see any dimensions other than the 24-foot gravel access driveway. In terms of the buffers on the driveway, I'm not sure the exact distance there. But I would, I would ask that maybe the, you're going to be making some changes to this plan for some of the issues you just spoke about?
It sounds like those are, those are requirements for, this doesn't require a site plan approval. So this would just be a plan we file with, with the building department, Rob Oliver, for building permits.
Right, but I mean, I would like to see, or the board would like to see, you know, some dimensions here so we can see what we're looking for spaces. Just getting an idea of what it is, and then as we talk about, you know, the buffer areas and things like that, we'll know what the dimensions are there. And I can say upfront now, I definitely want to visit the site. And I think some of the issues that Mr. Oliver brought up, and with, excuse me, the plan will be modified, can actually see it and see what's happening and where it is. And sometimes the visual is much better than trying to read off a plan. And just being, you know, as we talk about it, and you can mark out that proposed driveway just with a peg with an orange tape saying, here's the beginning, here's the end. And we've got the 24 feet between it. So we can see what the driveway is going to look like, where it's going, and clearly look at the bays back there and how they're going to be situated. So I'm just saying that upfront, that we will make a site visit, and we can get a better and a clearer understanding. Now, I'm going to open it up to my board members first, if they have any questions. I do have some questions, but I'm going to hold them till they have their opportunity to speak first. So either Randy or Mike, if you have some questions, please take the floor.
I don't have anything right now.
Okay, Randy?
I'm all set for right now as well. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Marchetti, I'm going to ask a few questions here. And what is, one is going to be, what is the landscaping plan that's going to be back here on that, the access on the driveway? If you're planning any, so I'd like the clarification, if there is, what is it? If not, then make it clear that there's none. Will there be any abutter screening? So, you know, as vehicles access that driveway, will it sheer, shield light, et cetera, and turning in, turning out? How will the light affect the abutting properties? We can look at that. It was, let's see. No, you mentioned snow briefly, and I'd like to see on the plan where the snow is planned to be stored. And I don't, I believe on the ordinance, it shouldn't be stored on the the landscaped area on the side of the driveway. And let's see, properly, you're going to talk about a drainage plan or how you're going to handle that? Because my, our concern too is if the runoff of melting snow, et cetera, goes on to the abutting properties of the neighbor's properties, the water should be retained as much as possible on this parcel. So if there's going to be a modification, we'd like to see that. Is there any proposed lighting in the back area here? Because I know you were going to submit a lighting plan.
There's going to be lighting all around the building, Ray.
Around the whole building?
Around the whole building, yes.
All right, and I'd like that on the plan to show where the lighting is going to be, and it should be all downward lighting or in that.
They all are downward. They're going to be 15-watt LED lights. We just did another building with 30 watts, which is not a lot, but it's, I think it's going to be too much for this building. So we're going to cut it back to 15. That was the electrician's recommendation also.
Thank you, Mr. Belanger. So I'd like, the board would like to see where these lights are going to be located. Are you going to gate the entrance to this driveway? Or leave it open?
No. On Blake Street?
No, Blake Street, yes.
I hadn't planned on paving it. We can do the apron.
Yeah, I do.
I want people to just to be able to come in and leave instead of being out in the middle of the road.
Yeah, well, that was just my question because I did not see anything, so I didn't know if it was being entertained or not. So the answer definitely is you're not planning on gating this.
No.
Okay. Hours of access, are they going to match the same hours on the, of the Chelsea Street side?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I think what I asked the question early, will there be any greening along the side, the buffers of the proposed gravel access?
On the north side of that, Ray, Gloria Fornia lives there, and they wanted me to keep the, they don't even bushes, it's just brush, and I'll show you when we meet on-site. They asked me if I could keep that buffer there. Personally, I think a fence would be a lot nicer, but I'm going to give her what she wants because I've known her for a long time, so she can have anything she wants.
Well, as long as the board concurs with that.
Yeah.
But that's why I think, as I made the statement, I think it's, it'll be beneficial to physically see this parcel. Greening. All prior conditions for the first variance will stay in effect. I put a note here, the lighting plan for the driveway. Are you planning to blacktop this at all in the future? Or planning to leave it just as a gravel access?
On this one, we're going to leave it as a gravel, but I see myself paving this at some point.
Okay. So if you see yourself paving it, if the board put that as a condition that it would have to be paved within a 12-month period or something, would we open to that?
It's not going to be paved within 12 months. I want to make sure that this drainage works before I start paving, because all we have is what we have to get into the ground. And we want to make sure that if I have to add a little more because we have water problems, I don't want to take up a driveway. You following me?
I follow you, but I mean, I do have some concerns being gravel, but I'm sure that's an issue we can talk about.
Yeah.
Some kind of.
I have lots of road grindings. I have mountains of road grinding. And that holds up pretty good. There's only going to be three vehicles coming in the backside.
Okay. That takes care of my questions or issues at this point in time. I'll go back to my members. If they have any comments or questions, Mr. Heglin?
Ray, would it be appropriate at this time to just go over and review the conditions that were issued as the original, original variance?
Yeah, do you have them in front of you?
Yeah, I had to pull them up. One of them. I can, I'll, I can read them.
Go ahead.
An exterior lighting plan to be submitted to the appropriate city official for review and approval.
Okay.
Hours of operation for the business, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and 8:00 to 2:00 Saturdays. No Sundays and major holidays.
Okay.
Signed to be posted, listing the hours and days of operation. We had a condition with regard to construction, which is to occur Monday through Friday, 7 to 6, Saturday, 8 to 2. No Sundays and holidays again. I think at the last one, last hearing, the applicant mentioned a security camera. It's a security camera system to be installed with approval of the building and commissioner. No electrical power in the storage base. Board to the north of the park lot to have plantings or other screening to prevent light wash onto neighboring property. The screening to be maintained is appropriate. Parking area to contain a paved apron, a minimum of 15 feet where it meets Chelsea Street. And water flow from the roof to be controlled to prevent runoff to abutters, and a greenway to be established on the right-hand side of the building.
Okay.
Those are the conditions that were initially.
All right, well, those conditions, we're not, at this point, changing them. They'll stay in effect at this point in time. I think it's.
I just don't necessarily want to be redundant, that's all, if we, you know, like the lighting.
I agree.
We want to elaborate. If we want to elaborate, that's fine, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, as, when we do visit the parcel, you know, we'll, we can have the list of conditions with us, and then we can make sure we're not duplicating and, you know, just reiterating the same thing. So just, we'll come up with a final listing that meets all the conditions we're looking for or what we need. Mr. Gary, do you have anything?
No, not at this time.
Okay.
Question for Mr. Marchetti. I have a question, Ray, for Mr. Marchetti.
Go ahead.
Is Blake Street paved or is that, what's the condition of Blake Street?
Road grindings. It's, it's all road grindings. So it's compacted. It looks, looks like, you know, it's hard compacted, but it's not, you know, full asphalt.
And that is a private street at this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any efforts being made for the city to accept Lake Street that you're aware of?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. Okay. Mike and Randy are all set. I'll ask now, are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Mr. Gene, the building commissioner, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There is no requirement to pave that parking lot, but our ordinance does require that the off-street parking facility shall be laid out and striped in compliance with the following minimum provisions, and then it goes on to state the widths and lengths of the parking areas, or parking spaces, I should say. So I guess I'm curious about how we're going to strike that if we're not going to pave it.
Okay, Mr. Marchetti will give you an opportunity.
Yep. If it's regrinds, it can certainly be stripped. It can be painted. It's just something that's going to have to be painted more frequently to maintain the actual striping.
Okay, so that would be your solution at this point. It might be multiple stripings in a year or whatever time period to keep the stripings well-defined?
Yes.
Okay. And there should be, in the plan, it should be laid out where you're planning to have them. I know we have it up on the north side. Those are, you know, pretty much laid out. Will there be any parking on this access, gravel access at all?
No, we weren't proposing that. It's three bays in the back, you know, whoever's accessing it would just drive up and park in front of the door.
All right, so there will be no parking allowed in the back to access those bays. They'll have to park in the front. I'm just trying to be clear, and then.
No, we, they would drive up to the back. It's three, basically, you know, three doors, they drive up to their units, access them. Access them and drive out. So we could, we could stripe a space in front of each door.
Okay.
If we had to.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Jean, you okay with the response? From Mr. Marchetti?
And, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, any further questions?
No, sir.
Okay. Any other city officials to speak or ask questions regarding this application? Any other city officials to ask questions on this regard, regarding this application? If none, I'll ask, are there any abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? There is none? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Have it noted there are none? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Not just clarify, it's application for modification. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? Noted that there's no speakers for opposition. So I would just open it back up to my two members, Randy and Mike, if you have any call. Closing questions.
No, I don't.
All right, go ahead, I'm all set.
Okay. I'm proposing we do not close this meeting this evening because I'd like to visit this property. As, as a board. And we can discuss a number of the issues that we spoke about tonight to get more clarification. And if you're going to update this plan that I held up earlier. Uh, that would be great to shows, you know, if you've got lighting in there, et cetera. And any new parking locations and. Definitions of greenways and proposed. I'll call landscaping or whatever, and if it is, what kind of landscaping you're going to use. Uh, we'll talk about part of that parcel. Mr. Belander, you said your neighbor. Is asking to leave it like it is.
I personally would rather clean it up, to tell you the truth.
So we'll take a look at that, and we'll see what, as it is, looks like. But other than that, um. I'm not going to close it. I'm going to continue this meeting, uh, to next month. And we'd like to set some time up. Uh, between then and now. To schedule a site visit. I know, you know, we have individuals who are still working, so. Either earlier in the evening or Saturday is best for our board members, and what's best for you gentlemen?
We can pretty much make anything work that works for you.
Okay, well, probably what we can do is. Uh, the three board members will get together and get a date, uh, two, I'll give it two days, A and B. Uh, it's best for us. Relay them to Rachel, and she will contact you, Mr. Marchetti. And we'll give the dates and time. And try to get this done as quick as we can.
All right, fantastic.
That acceptable?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, then, uh. That will just conclude your hearing here. It is not closed. Um. I'll ask for a quick vote for continuing this. Do I hear a motion to continue it to next month?
I'll move.
Uh, seconded.
Any other further discussion? Uh, my discussion is just update your plans and try to answer all the questions when we get there. Okay, so, uh. Unanimous to continue this to next month. So now I will move to the next case.
All right, thank you.
You, Mr. Marchetti, Mr. Belander. I just need a minute to change papers. Okay, Mr. Malina, are you ready?
Hey, Rachel, curious, is there anybody in the, uh, meeting room?
Rachel?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the meeting room?
Yes, there is. Do you want me to?
Yeah, maybe very.
Yeah, we're going to spin this around so that, um, Tony can.
Okay, all right, so this.
Good evening.
Couple of people.
Hello, Mr.
Much better, I'm going to put the phone down.
Couple of people, okay. I'm just curious. Thank you.
Okay, the next case before the board. Case two oh two two. Oh four oh two, Tony Molina. Molina Realty Special Permit for multifamily. Loss of zoning. Application to operate a three-family dwellings at three seventy-six Chestnut Street, Gardner Mas, parcel ID. Our twenty-two dash eighteen dash thirteen, located in the zoning district. General Residential Three, GR Three. Is denied, is denied as it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five dash one colon one, number four. Three or four family dwelling. Of the city code of Gardner. This property. Has lost its zoning status by right. The table of uses states that your use request. Requires a special permit. Issued by the Gardner Zoning Board of Appeals. So at this point, uh, I will ask Mr. Molina to make a presentation of. What his intentions for that property are and explain, and. Then we'll proceed. So, Mr. Molina. Please state your name and address for the record. And you may be good.
Thank you, thanks, thanks for the opportunity, um. So this is Tony, Tony Molina from Molina Realty, um, three seventy-six Chestnut Street, Gardner. Um. I am the newly owner of the property, um, when we purchased the property. Um, we were, you know, under the, uh, impression that. It was a, yeah, multifamily, uh, it looked like a three-family, we never did. Uh, I guess we knew that we had to go through the, uh, process to. Uh, possibilities of using it as a, a, a. Three dwelling unit, and that brings us to this evening, um. I have submitted the plans in, um. We are looking to do a full renovation to bring it back to its glory days to. Be an occupancy of a three-family dwelling, um. Bringing the whole structure up to code, uh, no alterations to the building ads or subtracted, just. Um, renovating all the interiors. Um, to today's code, um. I believe, um, you know. Parking and everything that, um. We have enough parking to the, uh, the requirement that we need per unit, uh, my, is my understanding, but if you have any other questions, please. I hope I can have the answers, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Molina. I, I have a few, but I will open it up to my board members first. Uh, Randy, from Mr. Gary. Do you have any questions for Mr. Molina at this point in time?
Not yet.
Yeah, not, not yet, is a good, I think is the appropriate response, yep.
Okay, Mr. Molina, I have a question. I'm looking at the, uh, three-family renovation drawing that you submitted.
Yes.
Okay. I see in the back, it says new, nine by eighteen, six parking spaces. New. These do not exist today?
It, it's, it was there, it just, it looks newer, it was paved within. Probably a year or so.
Okay.
But it's, it's existed.
A parcel of land behind that. Um. Right here. Is that just open area and, uh, just the, the back part of your property that is up, abutting? The neighbor to the rear?
Uh, there is some buffers of bushes, but we can certainly plant some, um. Buffers of. If need be, for privacy.
What is the distance or what are the dimensions of that little rectangle? Right here?
I got that in here in the plans. Let me just give you one, let me grab it one moment, uh.
Okay.
Sorry, I just. So between the corner and the property line on one side, we have. I'm, I'm sorry, lost you there, my.
Okay, go ahead, Mr.
So I have the larger plans here.
Yes. Let me see. The land behind the six parking places. So, wow, how big is that?
That, uh, we have, hold on a second, I have some measurements here. Twenty, yeah, like twenty-two feet by, um, what is the other measurement here? Thirty-two.
What, by thirty-two?
Yes.
What was the first number? I got the thirty-two, I missed the first number.
Yeah, twenty-two.
Okay, twenty-two by thirty-two.
Mr. Chairman, that, that doesn't look right because the. The dimension on the back lot line is sixty-six feet, so it's sixty-six feet by something. Probably, you know. Looking at it, it's a little bit more than half of that, sixty-six was probably. You know, forty, or thirty-five or forty by sixty-six or something like that, I think is what you're asking.
Yeah, and that's what it is, because I knew it was sixty-six, that's when you said thirty-two, I said it's not thirty-two.
Yeah, something's not right.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, so it's sixty-six.
Take this six this way.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is that just open area currently, Mr. Molina? Just grass?
It is, correct. Yep, grass and parking.
So you're probably about thirty to forty feet away from your, your neighbor to the rear.
Easily, yes.
Okay. All right. Uh, you did address. You know, you did address the nine issues that are required under a special permit. However, not everyone has seen it, or your responses. So I'm going to ask if you would go through those nine issues for, for the record of this meeting. If you don't have the nine issues in front of you, I will read them and you can respond.
Please, yes. You can read them if you can, if that's all right.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, please.
All right. Number one, those proposals shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed. And/or. The entire, excuse me, the entire city shall be compatible. With neighborhood character, existing uses, another permitted by right in the same district. So if you'd please answer that, is it or isn't it, and how is it?
Based on the, um, um, on, you know, on my. Little bit of investigation, all the properties in the, in the street, there's plenty of multifamilies, and this particular property. Uh, before, you know, it lost its status, was always used as a three-family, even though, you know, I don't know how it was recorded, but that's beyond the, the point, um. My understanding is that, uh. It wouldn't be the only three-family on the neighborhood.
Okay. Are there most, are there many multifamily homes in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Okay, number two. The proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian traffic movement. Within the site. In relation to adjacent streets. Property and improvements.
Yes, we have sufficient, uh, um. Uh, entrance, uh, clearance, you know, of driveway entrance, we share a driveway with the neighbors because the property was owned by the same family. But most of the driveway, it's on three seventy-six Chestnut, which, you know, this is proper, the subject property. And, uh. We have, uh. Uh, sufficient, uh, green in front of the house. From the walkway, the sidewalk, and, uh. Plenty of space with, for vehicles to come in and come out at the same time.
Okay, so if I can interpret your drawing here. Your driveway. Is right near space number one. If you backed into space one, you could drive straight out that driveway, is that correct?
Cor- correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Number three. The proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking. Loading and unloading of vehicles. And goods, products, materials and equipment incidental to the normal operation. Of the establishment or use.
Yes, again, uh, we have sufficient space, um. Sufficient, uh, uh, space on the driveway as much as we are planning on doing Hard Cape, right at the side entrance of where the offset of the building is, uh. Uh, on the side of the driveway where you see a little indent in the corner. That's a bulkhead, we're going to eliminate that, and we're going to make that more or less like a, uh, visitors parking or unloading area for mothers and, you know. Get their groceries and put them up in their apartments.
That leads me to the question of. Since we do receive snow here in the winter. Where are you, what are your plans, or where would you locate? The snow, and why did you clear the driveway and the areas around the parking spaces?
Yes, uh, we, our, our, our goal, well, our vision is to push it. Uh, the top parking lot, certainly we have plenty of space to push it forward, you know, past the parking spots. But the other area, we were hoping with the buffer between the driveway and the building, to be able to push the snow. Into that green area.
You have plenty of space to do it.
Yes.
Okay. Number four. The proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use. And disposal, disposal of sewage, refuse, and other waste products. And methods of drainage of surface water.
Yep, um, we are, you know. Connected to city water and city sewer. Uh, looking to upgrade the water main for a sprinkler system, so I don't think that that'll bring any issues. We'll probably upgrade all the. Gas utilities to comply and have enough. Um. For the demand of the three-family use.
Okay, number five. The proposal should not constitute a nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion, flood noise, odor, dust. Vibrations, lights. Or visually offensive structures. Or features.
Um, yeah, I don't think that that will be a problem because the exterior is going to remain. Asses, we're not going to really alter, besides dressing it up nice and new. Um, as far as the, the other brings us to the next point, uh. The parking area in the back, uh, I was trying to, we are gonna, I'm planning on illuminating that area with. Ballard lighting, so it's the two-foot ballards that keep the lighting very low, so it's not. It doesn't pollute the, you know, the neighborhood or the, or the neighbors. Per se, so it's kind of containing.
The budding neighbors. The lighting did not. Flow over to the neighbors there.
Right, yeah, the light pollution will contain that to just what's necessary.
Okay. Number six, the proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard. To abutters, vehicles, pedestrians. As determined by the Special Permit Granting Authority.
Yep, again, I don't, I don't believe that would be an issue as we are not doing any major or any alteration on the exterior besides redressing the landscape and the hard cape. Or.
All right, so you're not adding any, uh, we'll call it stairways or porches going up to the first, second, or third floor?
None of that, no, no alterations up to the exterior envelope.
Okay. Number seven, the proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter.
Yep, uh, that, uh, yeah, bring us to basically. Looking to restore the house to look as part of the neighborhood, um. Dressing it up to make it so that, uh, it doesn't stand out. Uh, any difference from the rest of them, uh, just so that I, it doesn't create any. Eyes or, you know, uh, uh, uh. Uh, different aesthetics. So we're looking to redress, rebuild, reclaim everything back to what it should be, but not changing necessarily. Any, any major changes to the aesthetics.
Okay. Number eight, the proposal should not have a significant detrimental impact to the city on. The tax base. And employment opportunities. Et cetera, that's what will be impacted by this, if this house is allowed to go to three-family. Is that correct?
That, yes.
Okay, number nine. The proposal is consistent with the city community development plan or master plan. And if you want, I'll read your response that you submitted. And you said, we are looking to renovate existing use and purpose. The previous owners were relocated when we purchased the building. So you want to get it back into. A functioning parcel of property? And, uh. You know, the master plan is to really upgrade the city and invest as we can. So you agree with that?
Yes, we're trying to renovate it back to its glory days. It was used as a three-family. And, uh, you know. It would be nice to be able to bring it back to what it was purpose for.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I'll ask my members, do you have any questions? Uh, I'll, I'll ask my members, do you have any questions, Mr. Molina, at this point?
I have one. Um, yep. Trash removal, are you gonna use city services or are you gonna have a dumpster?
Um, we um, we can go either way, I was planning to use the city services, but we could certainly hire our own.
Oh, that's, I'm just, no, that's fine, I just wanted to know which which way you were going.
Yep. That's city services.
Mr. Molina. The point that Mr. Gary's making is, uh, we see some multifamilies, they do have a small dumpster or some size dumpster on their property, but they also utilize the city trash collection services, so uh, we're not saying you have to have a dumpster, that would be voluntary on your part, but you would be utilizing at minimum city trash collection services, correct?
Yes, uh, normally, uh, because we own several, uh, the, the, the rule of thumb we use is that if the tenants start overflowing their trash barrels, then we subsidize that our own, um, trash company, and that it's kind of on a four-family hire, we all automatically do that, but on, um, sometimes multifamilies when they have, you know, more occupants, like more than two occupants, they tend to go overflow, and that's when we make the call to just hire a private trash pickup company.
Right, I think if you're putting a lot of capital in this building to bring it back or proposing, you don't want a bunch of trash barrels out in the front yard or falling over.
Correct, no, we are, we take a lot of pride on our properties, uh, and that's we, they, we are very um, particular about our maintenance, so.
Okay, Mr. Haglund, you had a question.
Well presented.
Uh, Mr. Molina, was, how, what was the use of this house, I mean, in the assessment plan, it listed as a three-family. Was it being, when you purchased it, was it being occupied as a two-family or a single-family, how, what was?
Well, it, it was three, they had three kitchens, every floor was treated as a separate apartment, had three electrical meters, three gas meters, three of everything, however, when I purchased, it was only the first floor, so that seems like someone was there and, uh, they left and left all they belonged, and we emptied the building with their household equipment. But, uh, all the other units, um, where previously used us, there was some household stuff, but it hasn't been for, it looked like it'd been there for at least five years, maybe more, first floor looked like recently been used, and all the heating systems were up and running still when we, uh, uh, purchased the property, and it was, yes, uh, used as a three-family through when we.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out when it lost its, I was just trying to figure out when it lost its grandfathering, that's all. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we just picked up, unfortunately, I don't have the answer to that, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so now, uh, anything else you'd like to state right now, Mr. Molina, before I proceed with, uh, asking if anybody else wants to speak?
Uh, no, I think I have.
Okay.
Ted, what, I got myself in enough trouble already, so.
Okay, are there any representatives of the city that would like to speak regarding this application? Mr. Jean, our building commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, to answer Mr. Haglund's question, anytime a a pre-existing non-conforming building is vacant for a period of two years or more, it loses any protection that it would have had and is required to go through this process again, and that's the case with this building. Um, the only other thing I'd like to add is that I have been to the property, I've seen the parking lot, it does exist, it was done last year by a previous owner, and, uh, it's paved, it looks real good, and that Mr. Molina has been very proactive in making sure that he talks to us and finds out what needs to happen to make this go through. That's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jean, now that prompts another question. As you mentioned, the parking area, are the parking areas lined at this point?
All right, they are.
Are they numbered or anything, so if you live there, you know your parking space is five inches?
They are, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other representatives, excuse me, representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any other representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any abutters to the property who would like to speak in favor of? Any abutters to the property who'd like to speak?
Right, yes, there isn't a butter here would like to speak, so hold on, we're just gonna have him step forward.
Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. I am hoping that you got my letter in the mail in my regard to this issue.
Yes, please state your name and address.
Oh, Earl Meeger. I'm gonna butter to the property on Chestnut Street, we live at two-eighty-five Elm Street in Gardner.
Okay, Mr. Meeger, I do have your letter, I was going to read it into the record, but you have the opportunity to speak now.
Okay, um, our problem with this, and thank you for letting me speak to the commission, but, uh, I have pictures here. I don't recall that driveway being there last year. That driver was put in in March, we have been at, we've owned the property at two-eighty-five Elm Street since nineteen eighty-eight. It's been vacant for a number of years. The occupants on the first floor of the building, um, the gentleman's wife was sick, she died, then he got sick, he had to be removed from the building, uh, and a budding neighbor took care of the property from that point forward. This driver was put in, we were never notified it was going to be there. And the pictures will show that our property line is a stone wall that's very close to that driveway. That house has always had a shared driveway um, with another home. And the parking was never in that backyard, never. We've been there since nineteen eighty-eight. Our in-laws built the house in the mid-sixties. Uh, there was never any parking up there. That area that I took the pictures from in our backyard is where our grandchildren play. And we're more than a little bit concerned about these parking areas right there. There's an incline going up to that driveway from the street, so any cars that are gonna go up there, their lights are gonna be shining right in their house. And in the letter, um, and what we're looking for is we would like to see the owner put up a six-foot solid fence across the backside of that parking area for the safety of our grandchildren and for our own privacy. And like I said, it was never there before, never been there, people never used it to park there before. This came about this year.
Okay. That's pretty much the gist of your letter.
Okay, and if there are any further questions, I'm leaving these pictures here. I've got.
Please do.
So that you've got something to look at in case you question it, um, I believe I left my phone number on the on the letter, you have any questions, feel free to call, but those are our concerns.
You didn't, uh, you did not leave your phone number.
All right, I can leave it here.
Please do.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But what is, oh, you're gonna leave your phone number there?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Mr. Molina, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Yes, please.
Is this a shared driveway now, or would that be a, I'll call it a
Is the entrance, yes, sorry, the entrance is a shared driveway, and as, uh, as far as, you know, the the fence, I have absolutely no problem doing whatever the, they, the neighbors want, uh, more than happy to take care of it, absolutely.
A fence?
Yeah.
Install a fence to the rear of that property?
Yes.
Okay, that's an issue that I would ask you to discuss with Mr. Meeger. So both of you come to an agreement of what's going to happen, the board normally does not dictate to someone unless there's a safety issue, et cetera, and it's proven that some kind of fencing or retaining walls that'll be established, but uh, I think, uh, generally, it's usually in a negotiated issue between the abutting parties, and they come to some resolution that satisfies everybody's concerns. So if you're willing an issue to, willing to discuss that with Mr. Meeger, and you can come to some kind of agreement, I'd, we'd appreciate that we be made aware of what agreement is, but also you may have to check with the building commissioner, make sure the fence is appropriate under zoning.
Yes, I may just, uh, the other, um, as we were, you know, as we, as you speak, and the other answer, we have had this, we have these issues in the past in other properties, um, and what we have done, because the fence, to be quite honest, is not attractive, uh, if you ask me, but so we have planted lines of cypress trees, so that creates a natural barrier, and we plant them close to each other, so that creates the buffer of light pollution and all that shining, so it doesn't get through, um, but we'll discuss that, we can certainly accommodate whatever is necessary, uh, to resolve that issue, absolutely.
Okay, I'd like to state too that I'm gonna request that the boards visit your property. I'd like to look at that driveway. I would like to look at your parking areas, and since Mr. Meeger is leaving, leaving some pictures, I'd love to be able to see those and then look at those and look at your property at the same time. So I think I'll approach it, and I'm not finished. I still have to ask if anybody else wants to speak, but we would do the same thing as try to set a convenient time for you and for our board members to be there. We would like to do it on the same day when we do Mr., uh, Marchetti's in the prior case, so we can get them both done on the same morning or something like that, uh, if that's okay with you. If you have discussions with Mr. Meeger, and you come to some kind of resolution before we come to your property, then that would be great, and you can tell us exactly what it is. I'll state this too is, in the past, uh, abutters have always asked to go onto the property to see when we visit. Unless the owner gives permission for the abutters to go on the property, they are not allowed on the property, so if you state Mr. Meeger cannot come on your property, he can attend the meeting, but have to stay in his own property, or if you agree to it, then Mr. Meeger can, you know, join us, not provide any additional information, but join us and he can see what we're talking about, what you're talking about, and hopefully it's something that he's in agreement with. So I'd let that decision be made, because we will notify Mr. Meeger when we're gonna visit, and you can determine that with Mr. Meeger. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you, definitely, I'll.
All right, now I'm gonna go back, I was asking for anybody who was speaking in favor of this application, but I allowed Mr. Meeger to speak, so is there any additional parties in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this application? Be known that there are none, I'll ask, are there any additional parties or interested parties who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any additional parties who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Be it known there are none other than Mr. Meeger. Uh, I will include Mr. Meeger's letter in our file. Uh, I don't really need to read it, because I think he almost read it himself, it's almost verbatim of what I have in front of me, so he did state his concerns were the driveway, the parking, and the safety of his grandchildren in the backyard, and he did in his letter ask for the board to require a fence be constructed, but as I stated, generally, we do not make those requirements unless there's a specific issue that's causing that, but you have agreed to speak with Mr. Meeger and to resolve this issue. Okay, so I'll ask my members, do you have any other questions? Michael?
No questions.
Randy?
No que- no questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, then what we will do is we will confer, we will come up with, I'll call Plan A and B of different dates or times, and try to, and match them up with, uh, Mr. Belandrew's request, and Rachel will contact you, and then we'll, we'll visit your property and we'll move as quickly as we can.
That sounds perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, do I, first, I'm gonna ask for a vote, uh, to continue this case to next month? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved, seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous, we're continuing your case to next month, Mr. Molina, and you'll be notified and Rachel will be in contact with you.
Fantastic, thank you very much, very much valued based time, thank you.
Okay. Board members, we do have a couple of things here. We've got minutes. We have to approve some minutes for Rachel. I know they were sent out, does that an opportunity to review them? Uh, Mr. Haglund made some corrections and changes, and Rachel has already updated it. So we've had an opportunity to look at the new minutes, and I would like to take them as a whole if I can, unless if you have some further questions, and I'll take them one by one.
I would move that we accept all of the outstanding minutes as amended.
And take them as a whole, Mr. Gary?
All of them, yep.
Okay, so do I hear motion to approve all the minutes, that's, I'll say they're on January, January thirty-first, February second, February fifteenth, there's a site visit minutes in there, so. You made a motion, Randy, you second it?
We absolutely agree with you.
Randy?
Second the motion, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? None, all in favor approving the minutes that I stated, say aye.
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 Okay, approved unanimously. Uh, I believe we have no further business before the board tonight. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Can we discuss possible dates for site visits while we're all together here?
Yeah, we can do that if you want, Randy, I think that's a good idea, just let me find my phone.
I'm gonna shut my video off here, because I've got an unstable.
Yeah, I know, it's been, it's been coming up. This, we'll take a five-minute recess, I have to go locate my phone.
Site visits.
Yeah. I wanna make sure we keep it, uh, keep that way, we, so we actually just.
All right, the case that lost phone is here. Okay, I'll call the meeting back to order. Um, the nineteenth. You wanna give them at least a week before we go see them? So I would look at sometime next week, the week of the twenty-fifth, possibly Saturday, the thirtieth. That's one date.
The week of the twenty-fifth right now, my Tuesday, Tuesday is open.
On the twenty-sixth, now Tuesday's not good for me.
You wanna, you, yeah, you gotta call the meeting back to order, Ray.
I thought I did. Okay, we'll reconvene the meeting, we'll call it back to order. And now we will try to set our dates. Twenty-sixth's out for me.
Mike is not on.
Oh, I'm here, I just shut my.
Oh, okay. Shut your, yeah, me too.
Um.
The twenty-seventh, the twenty-eighth is fine, the thirtieth is fine?
Twenty-seven, twenty-eighth don't work for me. Um, I'll be in Worcester on the twenty-seventh, I have a meeting on the twenty-eighth, so.
Thanks.
I can do the Saturday.
The thirtieth is good for me.
Thirtieth? Yeah, thirtieth is good for me, let's go for those.
All right.
Okay, what time would you like to do the first one, or do Blake Street first?
Sure.
Nine o'clock?
Nine o'clock.
And we'll say
Yep.
nine forty-five the latest probably for Chestnut Street.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, Rachel, let Mr. Molina know, we'll say nine forty-five for him, but we could be there a little bit.
Will you be able to do a site visit at nine forty-five on the thirtieth, Saturday morning?
Yes.
Yep, Tony's good.
But let. But let him know we could pop in a little bit earlier if we finish faster with Blake Street.
He's all good.
Yes.
Okay, so we're looking at the thirtieth, starting at nine o'clock on Blake Street, or I'd start on Chestnut Street and work my way around the building.
Okay.
Okay, so you will let them know?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. Any other issues from board members?
No.
Nope.
Okay. And uh Mr. Molina, did you hear the time we, uh, date we got for you?
Yes, I did, thank you very much, yeah.
All righty, so do I hear a motion then to adjourn?
Almost.
Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Meeting adjourned.